Okay.
Yeah.
Our meeting. Uh, gender adjustments on number five, the June school committee meeting minutes will be taken up at our next meeting. And this meeting is being recorded on Zoom. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on uh right to the treasurer. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, can I share my screen?
Yes, just one, just one sec, Jim.
Okay. This is just so I can, I can put the report up and maybe go along, but we have the um, the monthly treasures report.
See if that works, Faj.
Yes.
There it is.
Here it go.
Okay, I can't see it, but okay. So here's the treasury report, pretty much um, this time of year, we go through the process and um, about what is um, you know, what, what did the year look like? Um, so pretty much we, we budgeted fourteen point six million dollars. We brought in fourteen point nine, almost fifteen million, um, three hundred nineteen thousand dollars over the budgeted amount. And the expenses were down, were, or under, we under expended by eight hundred and fifty-five. So, so pretty much we, we walked into the end of the year with a surplus of about one point one million. We're making transfers tonight, um, where we're gonna have recommendations to, to um, to move money um, into various functions and so forth that we'll go through in the, the nine motions that I'll read um, in a few minutes. So, um, so and again, we'll have available about a hundred and three thousand to, to fund into our excess and deficiency account. Here's this typical cash balances of everything, a little over six million dollars. We've got old PEB reserve about nine hundred and two thousand. The um, the revenue for the month of June, again, we do, did all our billing on um, the first of May, all the money came in in June. Eight point, um, so we're um, we got a little over two million dollars during the course of the month. So everything's, everything's in good shape and we're, we're all, all in there. And we did get our regional transportation money, um, down here, seven hundred forty-eight thousand dollars came in for regional transportation. And we also down below here, there's a hundred ninety thousand dollar transfer. What's hap, what happened is that as we, we go through the Plymouth Cares, um, all the COVID money that came through, you know, the, the Plymouth County handled the money and then we, we pretty much invoiced all of our, our member towns for their share of our costs. And as we held that in an enterprise type of account for, for the two years we were collecting, um, we have about a hundred and ninety thousand. As we go through the process, as we get an expense, we try to allocate as much as we could against the Plymouth Cares money. But there was some staffing and other things that we just, that were still through the regular budget. So by transferring this one ninety over into our, our revenue side, it pretty much um, it, it closes out most of the, the COVID, Plymouth Cares amounts and um, reflects the proper accounting for everything. So um, we have our June um, expenditures and encumbrances and so forth for the year, uh, month. We have um, a budget, the budget transfers and then revised budget. We expended during the course of the month, um, again, a lot of money. What happens is that the teachers payroll, as we mentioned every year, they get paid over the summer, um, for part of their, for their contract. So we have a two, little over two million dollar salary expense that reflects this, the summer payroll for the teachers. We did have a, a larger than normal amount of teachers that requested lump sums this past um, this past June, had about, I think, eight, eight teachers. A couple of them were retiring or, or not coming back in the, in the fall. So they got their money a little bit up, upfront. So we did have more on the, on the lump sum, but everything else, pretty much any of your spending accounts, um, again, as we fixed up the building and did various small projects during the course of the month. So we had, um, you know, everything went well. And so overall, the bottom line is we spent, you know, thirteen million dollars for the year. And that's pretty much it. Everything's, everything's in good shape. We'll, um, we'll attack the nine motions that will be coming up in a second. But um, that's the report for um, the month of June.
Need a motion to accept Jim's treasures report?
Motion.
Second, Dan Whitman.
Okay, Bob Mahoney, Rockland and Whitman, Dan Salbucci, any discussion? Seeing none, every vote tonight, folks, is going to be a roll call. So I'll go through the uh, names. Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset? Is he on yet, Tom? Okay, Hanson?
George should be on, Bob, I'll double check.
Okay.
Hanson, yes.
George is on, Bob, if you want to go through the rest of the roll.
Cohasset, did you get the treasures report? Okay, Norwell? Bob's still muted.
Bob, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, sir. Is that, yes, vote for the treasures report, George?
Yes, please.
Who was that, Norwell?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now, Bob.
Okay.
All right, um, you'll vote on the treasures report, Robert?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Rockland?
Yes.
Situate?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
That was a yes. Motion carries unanimously. And now it's the warrants.
Okay, um, Mr. Mahoney, you want to read these guys?
Warrants twenty-five, twenty-five point one, twenty-five A, twenty-five point two, twenty-six, twenty-six A, twenty-six point one, twenty-seven, twenty-seven point two, twenty-six point two, twenty-seven point three, twenty-seven A and twenty-seven point four totaling one million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Seconded by?
Seconded, okay.
Norwell, all right, any uh, any discussion? Again, a roll call vote, Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Norwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Situate?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Hanover's a yes, motion carries unanimously. Budget transfers.
As you can imagine, during the last month of the year, we're um, moving money and spending money where we, where we need it. And um, knowing that we have surpluses um, in various accounts. So this list here between professional development, natural gas, rubbish removal, repairs and maintenance, professional fees, payroll taxes, people transport, books and instruction, athletic expense, shop supplies, student related expenses, miscellaneous transportation total a hundred and twenty-two thousand. And the, the vote is to move that from our health insurance where we had um, significant savings in our health insurance line, so.
Okay, motion to uh, Situate?
Make some motion.
Situate?
Whitman seconds.
Whitman second, thank you. Again, a roll call, Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Norwell?
Hi.
Rockland?
Yes.
Situate?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
And Hanover's a yes, motion carries unanimously. Jim is gonna talk about the closing.
Okay, we're, we're pretty much um, ninety-eight point five percent closed with everything. Couple struggles out there, they'll, they'll adjust the numbers maybe a little bit, but nothing significant. Again, this is Pam Credit, our payroll person, this is her first um, go around on the year end. So she did a fabulous job throwing a lot of stuff at her for the payroll. She had to go through all of the end of the year accruals and all the, the lump sums and make sure everything was in line. So she's been doing a great job um, replacing Tricia. And Janine's been doing a great job closing out old warrants and POs and, and getting everything. And in addition to, to managing a lot of the bid opening stuff, because we've had a lot of stuff out the bid. So she's our purchasing agent, so she's been going through a lot of that. So I can't say enough about the um, the ladies here in the office, Janine and Pam, they've been doing a, a great job. And even though I've been stressing him out a little bit the last couple of weeks to get the numbers closed and, and then final um, numbers tied out. Because again, we're also in the, in the phase of grants as well. Grants are getting to the end and we need to make sure all the grants have been expended. And, and um, so they're on the phone sending emails constantly trying to chase down um, a lot of the grant information as well. So things are going well and um, you know, so here we are tonight with the recommendations, so.
Jimmy, you're gonna um, be reading them all, then we'll vote it all as one or which way do you want?
Yeah, we can do it that way. So let me just um, share my screen again. Share that right here. So, so as in typical years, what happens is that um, we run, we run numbers, give Tom the numbers and then, you know, Tom works his magic with, with everything that's going on to figure out what um, what needs to be done um, for the end of the year, um, expenditures and closings and that sort. So with that, here are the motions. I guess if, since we're on Zoom, it would probably be easier to just take them all as, as one lump sum and um, be able to um, you know, Tom can step in and it's many explanations that need to be put in and so forth if anybody has it. But um, motion number one is hereby move to encumber one million sixteen thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents of the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two non-resident tuition in order to reduce the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three assessments to district towns. This is a normal, we talked about before, all the students that were in the building this past year, we collect all the added district tuition from, from their member towns. We put it in a bucket and then we empty the bucket in fiscal twenty-three. We've effectively reduced all of our member towns assessments when we did all the budget um, work in the, in the spring. So this is just moving that money from um, the pot that it's been sitting in as we collected it into the um, into the encumbrance um, factor. Any, anytime we encumber money, that it has to be a vote of the school committee. So that's what motion one takes care of. And anybody who has any questions as we move down the list, please.
Yeah, I have a question for you.
Yep.
I noticed in the previous motion, motion five, we're set, we're lowering the assessment for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget uh, for a certain number. I'm gonna take Whitman now, thirteen, four eighty-six. But now we come down here and it's, it's, it's another motion. Whitman receiving seventeen, three twenty-eight, is that combined together or?
Yes, they're two separate motions, um.
Right, so, so are we looking to reduce ours by thirty grand?
Yes, yes.
Wow.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to make.
So motion two is just, um, we reached out to um, Mark Abrams, who's the, you know, school finance guru that runs various seminars. And um, motion two is to hereby move to credit seven hundred and forty thousand to surplus revenue for unexpended reserve for encumbrance items for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school committee votes for seven hundred and forty thousand. What happened was that last year at this July meeting, we encumbered seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for basically projects, to start projects on, on the long range planning and so forth. Because um, you know, we had the delay in the windows and the roof because of the um, supply chain issues. And then we got invited into MSBA, we never expended any of this money. So we're pretty much taking this money, we're putting it back into the pot and crediting this, pretty much crediting revenue for that. Motion three is that hereby move to encumber nine hundred and twenty thousand from surplus revenue for the purchase of property to expand the social regional school district campus per recommendation of the superintendent director. This then takes the nine hundred, we encumber the nine twenty to buy the, to buy the, the four thirty-six Webster Street property. Motion four is, um, every year we have um, excess regional transportation. We have the regional transportation fund that we can then put that into the fund and we have to expend that in fiscal twenty-three. We normally based upon bus leases and so forth, we apply it to that, or we can apply it to what other types of transportation costs we might have. But it is hereby transferred a hundred and forty-eight thousand nine, one forty-eight, five forty-one from surplus regional transportation to the regional transportation fund. Motion five is hereby move to encumber sixty-five thousand dollars from surplus revenue for the purpose of reducing district member assessments for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget. Abington's ten thousand, three ninety-nine, Cohasset a thousand thirty-two, Hanover seven thousand, one ninety-eight, Hanson nine thousand, nine seventy-four, Norwell thirty-four, twelve, Rockland fourteen thousand, eight one two, Situate forty-six, seventy-nine, and Whitman thirteen thousand, four eighty-six. Um, and go and discussing with, with Tom, based upon our surplus, we haven't given the towns back any money um, in, in a few years because of all these ongoing projects. It was decided that, you know, we can give the towns back the sixty-five thousand dollars of our surplus for, for the, again, this is based upon the results of operations for fiscal twenty-two. So that's what the sixty-five thousand dollars um, represents. Okay, motion number six, um, it's hereby moved to encumber three hundred and eighty thousand dollars from surplus revenue to, uh, for the expanded upgrade of social regional school district campus per recommendation of the superintendent director. Tom provided a, a, a schedule of various upgrades that once the four hundred, four thirty-six Webster Street project is, is purchased and, and we are the owners, um, doing some building code, code compliance, some ADA work, um, stormwater treatment, wiring of various um, data and phone lines and, and the paving project that will be associated with that project. So all these types of projects related to four thirty-six total three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Motion seven, it is hereby move to encumber two hundred and thirty thousand from surplus revenue for the building renovations and repairs per the recommendation of the superintendent director. This pretty much is just a lot of small projects. One of the things on the docket would be to expand the cafeteria, um, that was about eighty thousand dollars. Again, continuing to upgrade our cameras and our, our security doors, um, doing pave, pave, paving sidewalk upgrades and um, adding some culinary doors and panels and some flooring replacements. So that all um, bundled up is about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then finally here number eight, um, and it's hereby move to encumber a hundred and fourteen thousand from surplus revenue for the equipment and supplies per the recommendation of the superintendent director. Again, this is to buy another vehicle, fourteen person vehicle, force forever and um, upgrades to the locker room and girls' lockers for that. And then to balance this off, it is hereby move to credit forty-five thousand dollars from surplus revenue for unexpended reserve for encumbrances for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one school committee votes. Again, this is another little project that we, we encumbered last year that we just, we, we just never got to and it's, it's pretty much back on the back burner. So we're adding that forty-five thousand dollars to um, the current year revenue. So those are the nine motions that relate to the um, the results of operations for fiscal twenty-two.
Okay, is any questions on any of the nine motions? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to accept all nine.
Situate makes the motion.
Uh, Whitman seconds.
Whitman second, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, again a roll call, Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Norwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Situate?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
And Hanover? Yes. That makes it unanimous, it motion carries.
And the next item under my um, my heading here is the fiscal twenty-three assessment reduction. And that's what's on the screen now. Pretty much what happened was that when we did all the budgeting work for um, for fiscal twenty-three, not, again, not knowing MSBA was in the, was in the picture, we, we budgeted seventy thousand dollars for debt service and interest payments and thinking that we were gonna, we were gonna use the ten million dollars that we had uh, received approval from, from our local towns. Um, again, once MSBA uh, came into the picture and everything was put, put on hold, we were sitting on the seventy thousand dollar budget item. And I think in, in good faith, um, I think, Tom, um, the theory is, is that there's no reason to charge the towns money that we know we're not gonna spend. So therefore, this motion is hereby move to authorize a secretary treasurer to reduce the district members' assessments for the fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three budget by seventy thousand dollars to reflect reduction in debt service expenses in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Abington eleven thousand, eight twenty-two, Cohasset five hundred and sixty-seven, Hanover five thousand, one hundred and forty-two, uh, Hanson nine thousand, five fifty-five, Norwell two thousand, one eighty-six, Rockland eighteen, five oh two, Situate four eight nine nine, and Whitman seventeen thousand, three twenty.
Do I have a motion to accept?
So. Abington?
Abington, you're second.
And second by Whitman?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So roll call vote, Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Norwell?
Hi.
Rockland?
Yes. Yes. I can't hear, hear you, Bob. Situate, yes. I'm not, I'm not, I'm muted.
No, Bob, can't hear Bob Haywood.
Oh.
Okay, Situate, yes?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Hanover, yes, motion carries unanimously. Now, the chairman hands the virtual gavel over to Jim for the nomination and voting process. And I want to thank everybody for putting up with this two years of craziness. We got it done, so thank you all.
Great job.
Thank you.
Um, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just one, one further clarification on the motion that we just voted. When you look at the, the motion for sixty-five thousand dollars and, that we voted um, in the first batch in this motion here, um, just be aware that even though the numbers are close together, the assessments, the, the amount of the refunds or reductions are, might be off a little bit. The um, the sixty-five thousand dollars, that reduction to the, to the member towns is based upon the current enrollment um, for one year, the current fiscal, the current school year, where the allocation of the reduction on this motion for fiscal twenty-three is based upon the three-year rolling numbers that we do every year to, to um, to calculate what the debt service um, factor is for our member town. So the percentages we use to distribute the sixty-five and the seventy thousand were both different, so. That's why there's a little bit of discrepancy if you try to run a percentage thing, so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, every year, July, I, I get the virtual gavel this year, so I have a stapler I can bang against the table, I guess, if I needed to. But um, so at this point, we're going to um, vote to reorganize. Um, historically, what has happened is that we've accepted nominations from the floor. We've also then, hold on a second. Yeah, the sun is glaring, glaring here in the office. We take nominations from the floor based upon Robert's rules of order. We do not need a second, we just need a confirmation that the person who is nominated is willing to accept the position. We continue with additional nominations. Once all the nominations are concerned, uh, um, we, we get all the nominations, we then, uh, we will do one round of voting. After that first round, the top two vote getters um, will then get, get, also will do another round of um, voting and so forth. So again, what will happen here is that I will open the floor for nominations. We're gonna handle the uh, position of chairman first. So um, do we have any nominations for chairman?
Nominate Bob Mahoney.
Okay. Mr. Mahoney, would you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any nominations for chairman? I will again request any nominations for chairman. The third, uh, request for nominations? Very good, I will close the nomination process. Seeing how Mr. Mahoney is the only um, candidate, we'll go through and roll call vote that as just for procedural purposes. Mr. Mahoney's name is in place in, in the election process for chairman. Mr. Petrazelli, Abington, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney from Cohasset?
Yes.
Mr. Haywood from Hanover?
Yes.
Mr. Mola from Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Mola from Norwell?
Upstain.
Upstain. Mr. Mahoney from Rockland?
Yes.
Mr. Manning from Situate?
Yes.
Mr. Salbucci from Whitman?
Yes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Mahoney, you are now the uh, chairman for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. We continue with the vice chairman position. Do we have any nominations for the floor for the vice chairman position?
Nominate Tom Cuttecelli.
Mr. Petrazelli, would you um, accept the nomination?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other nominations from the floor for vice chairman? For the second call for nominations for vice chairman? And final recommendation, nomination for vice chairman? Seeing none, Mr. Petrazelli is the only name placed in nomination for um, vice chairman. Roll call vote, Mr. Petrazelli?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney from Cohasset?
Yes.
Mr. Haywood from Hanover?
Yes.
Mr. Amico, Mr. Amico, oh God. Mr. Mola, Mr. Mola from Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Mola from Norwell?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney from Rockland?
Yes.
Mr. Manning from Situate?
Yes.
Mr. Salbucci from Whitman?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, the um, annual reorganization has now uh, closed. Congratulations to Mr. Mahoney, our new chairman, and Mr. Petrazelli, our vice chairman. At this point, I turn the meeting back over to the, the new chairman, uh, Mr. Robert Mahoney from Rockland. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, for the vote of confidence. I hope to uh, take this position very seriously and do a, uh, try to do a good job as Mr. Haywood did. So with that being said, uh, the new business? Uh, still superintendent's report?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if I may, I'll just, I'll just point out in the transition, we, uh, there are no subcommittee reports tonight, so uh, I'll just have a brief comment. I wanna, I also like to thank Bob Haywood for his uh, for his service and support as chair. He's done an admirable job. Uh, my summer report, MSBA, I was in touch with MSBA today asking, hey, when you gonna call me? And uh, they said they'll be in touch in a few weeks to talk about the chapter seventy-four uh, viability form we submitted a few months back. Uh, this has to do with the types of programs we might be interested in and enrollment projections. So the next couple of things that hopefully will uh, queue up in the summer and in early fall would be a conversation about chapter seventy-four programming. What they're waiting on is for the Department of Education to give feedback on what we submitted. And then secondly, talk about enrollment projections and then eventually get into some uh, seminars with them on preparing for uh, the bid process for, uh, the request for proposals process for a project manager. So they make no promises on timelines, we know that their board meets quarterly. So uh, it is my hope that we could be in a position to move to the next phase by the next quarterly meeting in September. If not, it could be December. Uh, and the other major update uh, is that our window project is uh, is on schedule and will hopefully be uh, in position to uh, to be substantially complete by, by early August. There might be some portions of the job where they have to uh, button up a little bit later on, but things are progressing nicely there. And I don't, uh, and I guess this is a non-update update, uh, I have, uh, I don't have any additional information uh, from Marshfield at this point and will uh, will continue to follow up. But I would suggest that at this point, there'd be no reasonable timeline to have this matter brought up to uh, special town meetings in the fall, which, you know, we said is a possibility. And if that is the case, we'll just uh, pick up the conversation when the parties are ready and perhaps look to next spring. And uh, now, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to uh, Mr. Aubrey for a, a brief administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey, I will keep it brief tonight, gentlemen. Just to piggyback on what Tom said, the window project is going very well and I commend them, they're working around.
and I commend them. They're working around our summer programs which are currently going on. So over the last two weeks, we've had a hundred and forty students. This is, uh, mostly seventh and eighth graders from our sending towns who are in the building trying out, uh, ten of our programs. So, uh, kudos to the staff members that are in. We've also employed some of our own students as aides in the classrooms to help, so that's been great as well. And as I said, the window folks have been flip-flop flopping and making sure one shop is open so we can use that this week and maybe not next week. So they have been very accommodating and they are doing a fabulous job on keeping on their timeline, so I can't say enough about that. Uh, just keeping on that theme of servicing our students, last week we finished up with our extended year programs. This is for students who maybe needed a little extra help, a little more time, and other students who through IEPs or 504s or whatever it may be, need extended school year to make sure that they do not, um, lose material over the summer. They don't have that summer drag that you often hear about. Uh, we also are bringing in, um, twenty-five, or we've invited, we've invited twenty-five of our incoming class of two thousand twenty-six. They're going to come in in mid-August and, um, work on some basic math skills. We've identified this group of students who has, um, number sense issues, things like that, that we want to address early and, and, and trying to help them. And they'll also, I'm glad to say, um, through scheduling, they're going to have the same teachers that they have in the August time. So that teacher will be able to continue with those students, know where their, their, uh, weaknesses are and address them as we go through the regular school year. So this is a model we're really happy about and I really think it's going to pay some dividends when we get around to the end of the year and then when we're looking at MCAS in two years out for these students in math. But that's about it for tonight, folks.
Mark, I just wanted to say, I've heard nothing but good reports from numerous people on the summer program.
It has been great. Yeah, so I, I'm in the building Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays and the, the parents who are picking up and dropping off are all ecstatic. Their kids are going away with projects, which was really the district's goal, Mr. Boyle's goal, is to have the kids making stuff, bring them in. They're, they're, it's exciting to see them. I, I won't use the word mature, but they, they, they blossom in just five days. Those kids who won't speak on Monday are very good at speaking to us on Thursday and Friday. So it's nice to see that growth from that seventh and eighth grade students and hopefully, obviously, the long-term goal is to have these kids want to apply to our school and just give them a taste or flavor of what we're all about. So it's, it's been a fabulous two weeks. Uh, like I said, we're, we're up to ten programs this year. We really want to try to get all twelve next year. So hopefully we can do that.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add one thing?
Jim?
Sure. Um, having been in the school all day yesterday and, and checking with Mr. Boyle early, he did mention that the culinary campers were going to be making pizza yesterday, so, um, I happen to, I have a, a friend of mine, his, her son is, is in the camp and went down and said hello to him and made Mr., um, Mr. McBurney aware that there was, there was staff up here at the front of the, of the building that all like pizza. So they, they did, um, I believe they made extra pizza dough for us and we got the phone call that, you know, we want to come down and make our own pizza. And in my, my ten minutes, fifteen minutes down in the, in the kitchen area, the kids were buzzing, the smiles on their face, the, their sauteing mushrooms, they're, they're doing chicken, they're, again, they're rolling dinner rolls. And, and again, just the, um, energy down there was, was tremendous. And you, you see all the kids with the hard hats running around the, the, the school too, and it's, it's a great program for these kids, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, good, new business? Dr. Hickey?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I, I would ask for a motion to approve the surplus declarations as listed, uh, for, uh, heat craft condensing unit and a twelve-quart standing mixer and also sham heat and hold electric oven.
Situit makes the motion. Second, Hanover.
Second.
Motion Situit, second, he didn't, Hanover. We'll call, we'll go roll call vote. Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Norwell?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Uh, Situit?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Okay, Abington? I said Abington, right?
Yes, you did.
George, everybody all set? Rockland says yes. You name them as well. Uh, request for action? Anybody have any press reaction? At this time?
About August meeting, uh, Mr. Chairman, August meet, are we having one or not?
Uh, Dr. Hickey?
Mr. Chairman, my, my recommendation would be that we can, uh, we would continue with the practice unless there's an MSBA matter or something timely that we would, uh, we would not have an August meeting.
Okay. I don't think we need a roll call vote. All of the favor, no meeting in August?
Hi.
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 Okay, well, enjoy your monthly, uh, off and, uh, hopefully we'll be joining, get the thing rolling in September when school starts.
That sounds good.
Enjoy, everybody, enjoy, uh, enjoy your rest of your summer. And, uh, at this time, Mr. Salvucci?
Our motion with all due respect to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Cohasset.
All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
I don't think we need a roll call for adjourn.
We're done.